Order for Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Please stand for flag allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and the Constitution of our own.
All call please, ladies.
Councilman Scourgey has an un military there. Councilman Livingston.
President.
Councilwoman Trump. Councilman Taylor.
President.
Councilman Papstran.
President.
Councilman Mott.
President.
President Scanlon.
President.
That's six here with one absence, Scourgey. So tonight in acknowledgements and recognitions, we have five outgoing council members that we'd like to acknowledge. If those five could step up here in front of the flags, that'd be great.
It would be all of them.
In case we're in some... We have some flags for all of you. Can I stand out?
That's, yeah, that's where I'd like to sign it, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now in approval of minutes from December fourth, two thousand nineteen business meeting, Councilman Matso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous approval of the business meetings from December fourth, twenty nineteen. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
So at this time, we'll set a public hearing. The Biggerton City Council and the mayor of the city of Biggerton will hold a public hearing regarding amendment to code of the city of Biggerton, chapter four-ten zoning to add a C six zoning district on January eighth, two thousand twenty, at the regularly scheduled business meeting.
Now in a public comment, you have five minutes to speak. Please be respectful. Madame, state your name, please.
Yeah. That's what I said. Somebody called on us, too. Camera, give him a call.
Yes, please, sir.
Please, have a seat.
Have a seat, okay. I didn't realize that. Hello, my name is Carl Bernhardt. I know many of you here. I've had the pleasure of working with many of you, and I wanted to come down and congratulate and thank everybody for their many years of service, for those of you who are leaving city council in this coming year. It takes great courage and far more effort than anybody ever really knows to be a public elected official, and I'm grateful for everything that all of you have done. I especially want to thank Councilman Matso and Councilman Papstran for your many, many years of service, especially Councilman Papstran, to our great city, and to let you know that you were inspirations for a lot of people who've gotten involved locally, myself included, and everything from the infrastructure projects to looking after our tax rate. You've made it possible for me to be a homeowner here in Biggerton and proud to be someone who calls this place my home. Thank you, that's all I had, and have a good evening.
Thanks very much, Carl. Anyone else wishing to speak, please go forward. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Your Honor, this is one nine dash one two seven, considered the planings, Councilman Matso.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, we are seeker. This is an ordinance, it's like it's a page. An ordinance authorizing the sale of four city-owned parcels to opportunities for rooming and for development of twenty-seven affordable housing units. A motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker.
All in favor?
Give me a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. A motion to identify the purpose, action as an unlisted under seeker.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons: opportunities for brooming, wishes to use thirty-nine to forty-nine Mansell Street, twenty-two Moffadae and twenty-two Way Street and Four Surges Street, Bayreuth, New York, the premises to be used for development of twenty-seven affordable housing units. This is a rehabilitation of existing residential units and is consistent with zoning.
Second.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstran.
Aye.
Councilman Matso.
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scourgey.
That is the seeker. Now I stand and ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance nineteen-one-two-seven. Second. An ordinance authorizing the sale of four city-owned parcels to opportunities for broom and for development of twenty-seven affordable housing units. Thank you.
Questions or comments on this? Call for question. Questions or call.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstran.
Aye.
Councilman Matso.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scourgey.
Your Honor, this is one nine dash one-two-nine, considered by the DA, Councilman Papstran.
President, I stand and ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance nineteen-dash-one-two-nine.
Second.
This is the ordinance amending supplemental agreements number one and three with Jacobs Project Management Company to extend the construction management service agreement through November thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Questions or comments, Mr. President? Council Livingston.
Thank you. So I'd like to speak to some stuff that was said at the last joint owners' meeting, specifically a comment made by our comptroller, as well as by the mayor, Jerry Nice, regarding the cost of this project, of the rehabilitation project, so it's true. He stated that, that the total budget for the project has always been two hundred and seventy-five million dollars, which on its face sounds a little odd, right? It's how can the project be years late on delivery, but on budget? So if you look into it, actually, it's pretty clear that that's just false, false statement. If you look at the bond ordinance, it's pretty interesting, it actually stretches back to two thousand and one, you can see every major move that we made on the sewer treatment plan over the course of twenty years. And, you know, in August of twenty nineteen, or August of twenty fifteen, we saw a two-hundred and six million dollar project, and then we saw in November of that year, a three-hundred and thirty million dollar project, and now, you know, as of, as of April of twenty seventeen, it was a three-hundred and sixty-five million dollar project. So this, this number two hundred and seventy-five million actually doesn't really appear anywhere. If you, if you assume a certain amount of reimbursement from FEMA, then maybe you see two hundred and seventy-five, like you assume a nine million dollar rehabilitation from, or rather, reimbursement from FEMA, then that two hundred and sixty-five million turns into, or rather, three hundred and sixty-five million turns into two hundred and seventy-five million. The reality is that the, even the formal communications from the project manager, the original project manager, Gary Holmes, to the DEC showed that not even he thought that the project was going to make it to two hundred and seventy-five million dollars. He said that in a letter to Sandy Lizlofs, I don't know how to pronounce her name, pardon me, that the project may exceed one hundred and fifty million dollars, and this was back in, in October of twenty fifteen, but he could say that it may exceed it by eighty percent. So, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just a little frustrated because I feel like we're being lied to right out in the open, and I feel like there needs to be some sort of, some sort of recourse for this, because otherwise, you know, what are we even doing here? What are we even doing on, on city council if we're going to sit in a meeting and have top-level managers, people responsible for this project, just openly lie to us in a meeting, a public meeting? And these, these things, I can share these documents, but they're all public documents. And I'm, I'm really, frankly frustrated that the city council has been, I feel like the city council gets diminished when it gets lied to and just toes the line. So I'm going to encourage my colleagues to, to vote no on this and, and, you know, let the next city council figure this one out, because if they feel comfortable being lied to by everybody involved in this, then, then that's what it is. But we don't need to tie them to this for the foreseeable future. I realize that just motions for paying Jacobs for work already done, but I think that it's really problematic that you've got a project manager lying to us right when we need to be getting an honest portrayal of what's going on at that sewer treatment plant. All right, towards the end, thank you.
Councilman Matso.
Uh, Councilman Livingston, I kind of disagree with you on most of this, because you're going back to two thousand and one, and it was two thousand and eight when the walls collapsed, is that not correct? Or was it two thousand, or was it similar? It was around two thousand and eight when the walls collapsed? The last administration did absolutely nothing to even fix this problem that we had, and we were getting fined, and we were never told this. And this administration that we have now actually had no choice, and it does cost us money, and I'm not going to deny it, but as far as the two hundred and seventy-five million, I kind of have to disagree with you on when they came out and I believe they're telling, this is what we spent as of this council and this administration. It cost us a lot of money before that also, because we were getting fined. So that does not include the construction that we're doing now. That was passed, and that passed was because the last administration didn't care about the taxpayers, that he raised taxes fifty-two percent, and he didn't, obviously, he didn't care about our joint water treatment plant with the walls collapsed, and we were getting fined. So I, that's where I have to disagree with you on. As far as the two hundred and seventy-five million, we had a pretty good idea that's what it was going to be when we were, when it was brought to the table to us to begin with. So that's where I disagree.
Any questions or comments, Mr. President? Councilman Papstran.
Thank you. This particular ordinance is to pay Jacobs for work that is already done, so, I mean, the comments, I find them offensive only because the comptroller, who's worked with the city, has been able to save the city a lot of money, been able to keep taxes at a, at a even or, or cut taxes, it all goes through that department, and to stand there and say that they lied without offering any proof other than your, your opinion of what you read, I think builds them with a problem.
Other questions or comments, Mr. President? Councilman Livingston.
I'm happy to furnish my colleagues with the documents that I have that show that this project was never on the books for two hundred and seventy-five million at the beginning, and I'm not talking about two hundred, two thousand and one, not trying to carry water from the previous administration, didn't bring that up, it's not really something that I think is germane to this, this conversation, but what I'm talking about is, we were told at the city council, or rather, at the joint owners' meeting, what was it, in October, November, in November, that this project was always two hundred and seventy-five million. And if somebody could point to me in black and white where that's the case, then I'm, I'm standing on a different ground, but what I'm looking at here, letters to the DEC circa two thousand and fifteen, show that our project, that our, our construction manager, didn't believe that this project was going to cost too much more than one hundred and fifty million dollars, and there, there just wasn't anything on the books for two hundred and seventy-five million, which is the number that it was claimed by multiple people, was always there. And also, how, how did the project be this late on delivery and be on budget? It just doesn't make sense.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Like Councilman Papstran said, first of all, this is to pay for the work that they've done, and I'm definitely willing to vote yes for the work that they have completed. There were things in this joint water treatment plant that were unforeseen underground. That is, that is a counter. Yes, he started out at a hundred and fifty million, and actually, the last administration, when we were there, they started off at sixty million, and they were going to put in the same stuff that didn't work to begin with, and according to the DEC, when they were here talking to us, it only passed through the DEC for three days, and it never worked, and they wanted to put back in the same stuff that was there that didn't work. So, and you didn't talk back to two thousand and one, this has been costly, because that's why I brought up the last administration. Well, you know, there were a lot of unforeseen things underground with that. There were walls that, concrete, there were sewer lines that were not expected, the plant was built back in the sixties, where records probably weren't that great to keep, or if they did keep them, it might have got washed away in floods, it might have gotten destroyed over time, who knows how they kept running back then. So this is where I am going to vote yes, to pay these people for what they have done. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to say that I have seen some of the documentation that Councilman Livingston is referring to, and there does seem to be a level of discrepancy between numbers that are presented in council and numbers that have existed during our time in council and before this. With that being said, I will be voting for this specific piece of legislation because it's important that they have already done, and it is work that we should pay, we are not entitled to.
Any questions or comments? Call for question. Mr. McColl.
Councilman Livingston.
Nay.
Councilwoman Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstran.
Aye.
Councilman Matso.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's five ayes, one ayes, Livingston, one absence, Scourgey.
Your Honor, your resolution, one nine dash one, one oh, one zero zero, considered finance, Councilman Papstran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration on resolution nineteen dash one hundred.
Second. The resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with opportunities for broom, shenanigans, for use of fiscal year forty-four, fiscal year forty-five, home, cholo funding for rehabilitation of four, or five.
Questions or comments? Call for question, Mr. President. Mr. McColl.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstran.
Aye.
Councilman Matso.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scourgey.
Your Honor, this is one nine dash one-one-three, considered planning, Councilman Matso.
Thank you, seeker of all mysteries, Mr. President. Yes, this is the seeker. An ordinance amending the code of the city of Biggerton, chapter four-ten, zoning modern, to modernize zoning regulations and streamline the planning approval process. A motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to identify proposed action as a type one under seeker.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons: the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, updates uses to be more consistent with actual uses in the city, updates definitions to be more consistent with current building code and New York State definitions, amends use and parking requirements to prevent overcrowding primarily in downtown residential areas, and streamlines process for projects that do not have significant environmental impact, as defined by the State Environmental Quality Review Act. These changes should have a positive impact on the application process, process, and provide more guidance to property owners in the city. A full statement of findings is attached to the legislation.
Give me a second.
Second.
More call please.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstran.
Aye.
Councilman Matso.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scourgey.
No, I stand for unanimous consideration on ordinance nineteen-one-thirteen. Second. An ordinance amending the code of the city of Biggerton, chapter four, added zoning to modernize zoning regulations and streamline the planning approval process. We agree with this, thank you.
Questions or comments, Councilman Taylor.
There's a, there's a lot of good stuff in these zoning changes. I want to start by thanking the planning department for all the hard work that they put into this. Zoning and code, those are things that should consistently be looked at, finding municipalities are always best managers being developed for municipalities, especially those our size, how to truly build a city that is aimed towards creating communities for tomorrow. I think that there's still a lot of left work to do personally, even with these changes that we're discussing tonight. I think that there are some great ways to incentivize affordable housing, for example, that should be part of these zoning changes, and they should be taken on by the next big of the city council. There are future discussions, I think, that's looking to be had about parking, what's the role that plays in our zoning code, especially as we try to create more walkable, pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly cities. With that being said, we need to consistently be modernizing our zoning code and optimizing it, and that is why I support the legislation.
Any questions or comments, Councilman?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo what Councilman Taylor said. You know, I think that this is a start. It's definitely stuff that needs to be done, and the amount of work that planning put into this, you know, is a, is a, and the thought that they put into it, I think, it's definitely an important piece of legislation, and I want to encourage the oncoming city council to, you know, to continue to come away with this, with these issues of housing, land use, development, that can be addressed through zoning ordinances, basically some of the biggest challenges facing municipalities around the country, whether they're wealthy municipalities, or whether they're, you know, municipalities like the Rust Belt, close industrial municipalities, they all have challenges that can be addressed in part, in parcel, through, thank you, through, for zoning ordinances. So I'm, yes, well, I'm just encouraging my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Call for question.
Mr. McColl.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstran.
Aye.
Councilman Matso.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scourgey.
Your Honor, this is one nine dash one-two-two, considered planning, Councilman Matso.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a little secret, State Environmental Quality Review Act. An ordinance authorizing the sale of one Fayette Street and one fifty-seven Sussman Street to the volunteers improving neighborhood environment or vines for construction of a two-to-three-story building for offices and program. A motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to identify the purpose, action as an unlisted under seeker.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons: this is a vacant lot, vines is a nonprofit organization committed to developing a sustainable and just community food system, as stated on, on its website. Vines currently operates under numerous community firms throughout the city. The sale of the lots is for construction of a two-to-three-story building for offices and program. This is a transition, transitional neighborhood, and local businesses expect to have a positive impact on the neighborhood. The proposed uses consistently, consistently with zoning for these adjacent properties. Development consistent with zoning will not create any negative environmental impact, and specific plans will be reviewed by planning permission. Second.
Say that three times, okay? All call please.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilwoman Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstran.
Aye.
Councilman Matso.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scourgey.
Now I stand and ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance nineteen-one-two-two. Second. An ordinance authorizing the sale of one Fayette Street and one fifty-seven Sussman Street to volunteers improving neighborhood environments or vines for construction of a two-to-three-story building for offices and program. Thank you.
Questions or comments, Councilman Taylor.
Thank you. I know we've talked about this ordinance quite a bit by now. I'll just end my part of the conversation by, as the representative for the council this question, I humbly ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this. I think it will do good for that community. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Trump.
Hi, my microphone's off, so hopefully you can hear me. Thanks. No one's going to take care of our community like our community is. Like I said, this is a local nonprofit. They're here, they see what the needs are for our community, we need to really stand with them. I hope that anyone will focus on this, because this is something that teaches our kids, a program that my daughter even went through, and she graduated college with, in ecology because of vines, and she's going on to either broom or surges, she's trying to figure out which one, but, I mean, this does change lives. A lot of loving people in the community, and that's, that's where, you know, we need to start looking at, because these kids, when they grow up, what are we offering to them? So I really hope that you guys will help, be a part of it as well, and support this. Thank you.
Councilman Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually want to speak to economic impact. It occurred to me when Councilman Matso held us over because of those letters from those adjacent, or those nearby businesses. I just wanted to tell a story, actually, about Randy over from the New York Radiator. I, I started going to New York Radiator when we were setting up New York Farm years ago, and I, I actually really enjoy talking with him. Bigger fan of Trump you will never find. Randy is, you know, pretty different politically, but... A bigger fan of Trump you will never find, um, Randy is, you know, pretty different politically, but, um, he's just a really decent guy. And I think he does a really good job fixing those cars, so I really like going over there. And I've recommended it to a lot of people over the years to go to New York Radiator. And I know a lot of people have gone on my recommendation, continuing to, uh, to continue to go there as years have gone by. And, um, and I, he invited me to his Halloween party one year also back in 2017. It was probably the most amazing Halloween party that I've ever been to, they had like every one of those animatronic robot, like corpses and whatever, it was fantastic. Um, but anyway, I guess what I'm saying is that, um, having a little more activity than anywhere in that neighborhood has a positive impact on, on those businesses. Um, I have also been to Schneidl Supply, and I didn't even know that place was there, it's pretty awesome. Type of, you know, construction-related stuff that they, that they sell, haven't been able to find anywhere else. I'm glad that I, I know about them too, and I know about them because of, um, because the Earth Farm is, it's the only, I really think it's the only reason I've ever have gone down that street and looked into those businesses.
Other questions or comments? All question, Mr. McColl?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstra?
Aye.
Councilman Montz?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one actions, correction.
Director Ordinance, 19-133, considered finance, Councilman Papstra?
Think, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-133?
Second.
This is an ordinance amending the 2019 store budget to fund additional administrative fees for refinancing of the EFC buildings.
Questions or comments on this?
All question.
Mr. McColl?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstra?
Aye.
Councilman Montz?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one actions, correction.
Director Ordinance, 19-134, considered finance, Councilman Papstra?
Mr. President, I'd like to again ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-134?
Second.
This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor entering to a supplemental agreement number four with Jacobs Project Management Company to extend the construction management service agreement through December 31st, 2021.
Questions or comments? Councilman Livingston?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I wanted to address a persistent claim from, um, from the mayor, from city hall staff, from, uh, some of my colleagues on the city council, that the Jacobs Engineering that does, um, construction project management and Jacobs that does O and M, um, the type of, you know, work that we're looking to practice out, um, this claim that things are completely different parts of a large corporation. Um, so I did some digging, um, and I found transcripts of Jacobs earnings calls, um, quarterly earnings calls they do for investors. Um, they go back pretty far, the full transcripts, um, and it's really interesting, uh, because this, this merger between CH2M Health, which is this large O and M company that Jacobs purchased back in August of 2017 for 3.3 million dollars. Um, it's, it was a pretty big deal inside the company, it's been discussed at length, and, you know, there are a lot of question and answers between different investors, um, in these calls, and the, the persistent, um, move or the, the trajectory of CH2M Health inside Jacobs is towards integration, their goal is to completely integrate, uh, this, this separate company, rather large company, it was a competitor, into Jacobs Engineering, uh, as a, as a whole. And, you know, when you start looking into the, I did speak at the previous business meeting on this notion that this conflict of interest doesn't exist, that folks at the state will have, have expressed, um, and I'm going to push back against that a little bit more here, um, because, you know, when you look at the type of project we got is, it's a build project under Wixel, um, and that's, that's where our construction project is. In, in New York State, you know, you can do some design and build, but not for a project like this. And in some states, you can still do design and build, in some places in the world, and this is a multinational corporation, you can do design and build operating. And so, the idea that Jacobs Engineering would, would silo those different aspects of their company, um, is, well, it's, it's not just something that Jacobs themselves would, would push back on, because they do, um, operate those different aspects. Their, their design engineering, their construction management, and their, um, their facilities operations and management. They do operate those things together, um, in different parts of the world, in different parts of the country. Um, so this idea that there is demonstrably no conflict of interest, um, having Jacobs bidding this contract for privatization and also being a project manager is, I mean, I'd be happy to share this, this archive of, um, of quarterly earnings calls. You can search for a couple of key terms in there, and you can see how Jacobs really talks about their operations. They're a pretty big company, you know, they do finish like nuclear waste disposal that obviously is a separate side or part of their, their operation. But the different parts of their company that, that handle construction management for sewage treatment plant and operational management for sewage treatment plant are very much working together. Um, and, I mean, I also think that this, this motion, this motion is actually quite a big deal. You know, to, to extend a contract by 1.9 million dollars until the end of 2021, which really kind of begs the question, what's going to happen? Are we really expecting this thing to be done in August of 2020? And, or is it going to continue? Sorry. Or are we going to continue on and on? Uh, so I, I think, you know, as I've said in the past, that this is, this is a question that we should not be discussing, we should not be considering, um, at the last meeting of this city council, that it's something that really should be left up to the next city council. They should have an opportunity to decide whether there is a conflict of interest here, whether they do want to see a little bit more information on what's going, I mean, if there's information that, that could tell us that Jacobs is no longer being considered for this privatization contract, that would change things. We're not hearing anything, we're getting, we're getting nothing. So we don't know whether this company's conflicted in a, in a very serious way, or whether that conflict is going to resolve. And so because of that, we make a motion to hold this over.
Second. All right, Mr. President. So, um, please pull, pull the, uh, council people for a special meeting to be held tomorrow at 5:30?
5:30 please. Uh, Councilman Livingston, are you available tomorrow at 5:30?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross, are you going to be available tomorrow? That's right.
Yes. I'm not supposed to be, but I will make the special trip, yes.
No.
I'm available, yes. So a special meeting tomorrow at 5:30 in the workroom.
Mr. President, because it's been held over, just comment on the legislation. Councilman Papstra, go ahead.
This particular legislation and what Councilman Livingston, uh, proposed to speak about are two different things. This is to extend the contract to 2021 so that things, so we have a project manager on staff until this project gets done. If it's going to get done before that, this contract's going to end before that. And the fact that, uh, he's bringing up privatization of the plant and, and Jacobs being a bidder or whatever, uh, that's a whole different ballgame. That's something to do with kind of with this particular legislation. And the new council isn't going to be able to take up the privatization issue. It's not, it's not a, I mean, it has not been announced who's going to, uh, who the preferred contractor is, that's going to present their case. It's nothing that's been predetermined that this is the way the city's going to go. So the fact that you're, you're making assumptions again about, uh, who's going to, uh, be the, uh, the private management company when it's not even, it hasn't even been talked about, that's, all the debate is going to be coming up, that the next council will, will tackle. But if we don't have a supplemental agreement and a, and a project management team to overlook the rest of the contract, who's going to do it? Is, uh, our engineer going to go there and look and see that everything's going to go properly? Is this how you want to finish out your term?
Mr. President?
Councilman Montz, you're next, Councilman Taylor, continue.
All right, uh, he's assuming that Jacobs bid, Councilman Livingston, this, we don't even know who bid this for the privatization. Um, Mr. President, did you get any notification to bid this, do we know the bidders that are on this project? I do not. Councilman Taylor, do you know?
That's part of the problem, yeah.
The, we don't, it's not the problem because this is not, this has nothing to do-
Councilman Montz, I support this.
This has nothing to do with the privatization of it, this has to do with finishing our plan, we need this plan finished. I'm supposed to be out of town tomorrow, but I'm going to make this meeting, I'll find a way to get back in town. Um, this, this has to be going on, we have to have somebody there to watch and foresee and make sure everything on this plan goes and finishes by 2021 completely, and make sure it's up and running properly. So I definitely got to be here for tomorrow, thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a very tough argument to make to say that this contract that we're discussing, which goes through 2021, doesn't have anything to do with the ongoing discussion that is being had behind closed doors on whether or not to privatize sewage treatment plant and what company is going to do it. We have been asking for months and months and months and months. The deadline for this discussion was in August for a vote to be had already. We've been asking for months to have some sort of discussion publicly or with the council members who are supposedly supposed to make this decision. Members and staff at the joint sewage treatment plant whose lives and jobs are on the line, livelihoods and jobs are on the line have come to city council, our employees have begged us to give them some sort of information, please, what, what, what is my life going to look like in 2020 and 2021? And no information has been presented to us. So, yeah, we don't know if Jacobs Engineering is the privatization entity for the joint sewage treatment plant. And that's part of the problem, how can we be asked to vote on extending this contract for two more years with a company that may be operating the plant itself? If the company is operating the sewage treatment plant and also doing the construction on that plant, that is, in essence, a conflict of interest. So to say that they are not connected to one another would be a very, very, very tough argument to make, in my opinion. And I don't think that it's our decision to make. I think that in a few weeks, five council members here will not be here anymore, it's a new council. I'm not comfortable making a decision that says that there is no conflict of interest here. And quite frankly, this decision that, this bill that we're making tonight is directly connected to the discussion about privatization. And, and there should be no vote on this contract extension until we know who the privatization entity is going to be, what company will that be? Because then at that point, we'll have all the information, and we can only vote with the interests of our constituents in mind when we have all the information. That's all I'm asking for, the information. At that point, that that information is furnished and that public discussions have, then either this council or the next can make the decision. Until then, we don't know whether or not it's a public interest, and that's just as good of a reason as any to say we can't vote on this yet.
Other questions or comments?
Not only you say that it's, it's not connected, the privatization hasn't even been discussed. And, and the fact that they haven't write it down is because there's nothing to bring down. So instead of, uh, waiting, we've spread, not we, but some people have spread misinformation about this where people already made up their minds that there's, uh, you know, we don't want to, we don't want privatization. What I'm knowing, is it good for the right payers, is it good for the employees? No one knows that because it hasn't been discussed. This is a contract to finish, for our construction management to finish out their duties, to be our watchdog for that, for that, uh, plant to get done properly and on time. So what you're doing is, if we have a special meeting, there's enough votes to pass this, you're not going to be here tomorrow, you're not going to be here tomorrow. So you're just, uh, delaying it, uh, for your own satisfaction, and it's not, and the outcome's going to be the same tomorrow. Then you won't even, then you won't even come back to, uh, to vote no more.
Mr. President? Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I spoke out of, out of order before it seemed like it was in vote. Um, I just wanted to address, it seemed like Mr. President and, uh, Mr. Montz, you were unclear as to whether Jacobs had submitted a bid for this contract. There was a pre-bid conference that all the bidders had to attend if they wanted to submit a bid, Jacobs Engineering was in attendance. And there was a bid opening, that was a public event that happened in these chambers, I can't remember the exact date, um, but Jeff Platsky, uh, did a newspaper article on that bid opening. Jacobs Engineering, Veolia, and Utility Partners were the, the three bidders that submitted it, public information, that's about all that's public about this.
Councilman Taylor?
I get no satisfaction, Councilman Papstra, for holding this over, and I balk at that categorization. Um, I genuinely believe that we should not be voting on this. I acknowledge that it's just going to pass tomorrow.
Well, then come, come, come on, tell us it's not tomorrow.
I don't think you should be holding a special meeting tomorrow. You're, you're misunderstanding my point, Councilman, with all due respect, I don't think it is appropriate for you to hold a special meeting tomorrow and vote on this. I do not think it's appropriate to have this vote, I do not think we have all the information. I think we could be emboldening a, a very serious conflict of interest that could lead to further failure and, and on behalf of the city of Burlington, taxpayers and right payers, that's my opinion. I am not doing this out of satisfaction, I'm not doing this because, oh, it's all going to happen anyway, and I'm making a political point. That is a very unfair categorization of, of why I'm doing this, I'm doing this because I think it's inappropriate. I do not think that we should vote on this, I don't think you should have a special meeting tomorrow. I think this is a, a, a very serious decision that is paired with the decision whether or not to privatize. I think they very much are connected, that is my opinion. And I think that this very serious decision should be left to the next council, and it should be paired with information regarding privatization because the same company has bid on the privatization and may be the privatization entity. I said my argument, I, I, I think it is sound, I respect your argument, but to categorize why I'm holding this over for, you know, the way that you put it, I think is unfair, and the truth is, I do not think you should have a special meeting tomorrow. I think it is inappropriate to vote on, and that's my opinion.
Aye. Councilman Montz?
Uh, this is directed to our corporation council.
This is directed to our Corporation Council. If this doesn't pass, does that mean Jacobs will not be working from January until?
I can make that representation whenever. Are controllers, are controllers here? But I certainly don't have that information.
I was just wondering if, if this doesn't pass, then, because this is their contract till 2021 and we're paying them right now for the work they've done, does that mean they stop working immediately after this and keep watching the joint sewage treatment plant?
I can make a representation either way, seeing as it is now December 18th. Work is ongoing. City Council just passed a resolution authorizing the payment of work from November 31st. Or I'm sure it doesn't mean to stop them. However, I can't really speak beyond that, Mr. President.
Councilman Mato, as a business owner, I wouldn't be working if I wasn't getting paid. There wasn't an account of it, so that's my answer to that. Is there any other question or comments, Councilman, Councilman Crabb?
Yeah, for the last four years, we've been in charge of the construction. And we've been once voting on it. We have a new city council coming in who doesn't know the path that we've gone through. And yes, it's been a slow, painful process. It's been costing us a lot of money. We're not going to lie, it has. And it's not been fun. But we're the ones that were in charge of this. We're the ones in charge of this vote. They can choose who to pick for the bid. That's not our vote. We don't have anything to say about that. That's not our problem. That's theirs. And they have to make the choice on that. Our vote is in the construction that we already started and we already paid. And we owe it to our taxpayers to make sure that the work gets done in the timely matters possible. And yes, it keeps going on longer. But if we delay it, we're going to make it even longer. And we're going to have more fees. And we're going to have longer time for our taxpayers to wait until this is finished. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Papastri?
Thank you, Mr. President. To Councilman Taylor, for the last four years, we've worked together. Always respected your opinion. And I still do. I strongly disagree with your assumption on this one. And that's why I have this ongoing argument. I strongly disagree. We need to vote on the supplemental agreement. And because it's not fair to put the other, the new council, like Councilman, Councilman McCrath said, we are familiar with this process. We need to take care of that, the bid for privatization, whether or not it goes anywhere again. We can't make assumptions that we're going to privatize the management of the wastewater treatment plant. That's something that's not been discussed and shouldn't be discussed because we don't have any information on it. So one has nothing to do with the other. And that's, I would stand by that. And that's why I think we should, we should go for it. And I'm sorry that we're holding it over because it ties everyone up for a national debate. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough, please. Hold on. We held it over. All right, so, if your ordinance 19-134 is held over, a special meeting tomorrow at 5:30. If your ordinance 19-135, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration ordinance 19-135.
I'm sorry, I just interrupted you. This is the block C D G.
We're not getting to that.
Oh, I see. That's my mistake. These are amendments.
Yeah. This is an ordinance to amend the, oh, did I get a second?
Second.
It's an ordinance to amend fiscal year 45 C D G budget to fund the North Side Chow grocery store.
Questions or comments on this?
Yo. Councilman Mato? This has been a long time coming for the North Side of Vigerton. They've been waiting for, since I've been on council and way before I was on council, for the grocery store over there. I think this is a great project that's moving forward. And I'm happy that this is coming about. It's going to be another year to before I'm sure that it's completed and open. And I want to congratulate everybody on the North Side when this does open because you will have an actual F P S itself. It's pretty awesome. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-136, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-137.
Second.
Or 136. Oh.
Still second.
Yeah, still second.
This is, uh, ordinance 19-136. Thank you, Councilman. This is an ordinance to amend fiscal year 45 C D G budget to fund the Cornell Clubber Extension Citizen Union Program.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-137, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-137. Second. It's an ordinance to amend the 2019 Virginia Johnson City Joint Sewage Board Budget for additional appropriations for electricity, plant runs, and T P S electricity.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-138, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-138. Second. This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 capital budget for the city's rising project.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-139, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri. Again.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-139. Second. This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Parks Department Budget for Overtime.
Questions or comments on this? Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-140, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-140.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Parks Department Budget to transfer funds for insurance and management services and to account for increased revenues to fund increased expenses.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-141, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-141.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Virginia Johnson City Joint Sewage Board Budget for additional appropriations for overtime.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-142, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-142.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Virginia Johnson City Joint Sewage Board Budget for additional appropriations for equipment to purchase outdoor automatic sampling devices.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-143, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-143. Second. It's an ordinance to amend the 2019 Engineering, Library, and Finance Department Budgets for General Infrastructure.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-144, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-144.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Engineering Budget for Temporary Services.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-145, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-145.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Water Department Budget for Overtime.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-146, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-146. Second. This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Fire Department Budget for Out-of-Title, E N T Instructor Day, Overtime, Vehicle Parts, and Gasoline Diesel.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-147, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-147. Second. This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Police Department Budget for Holiday Day Field Training, Shift Differential, Gasoline, Diesel, and Travel and Training.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-148, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-148. Second. This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Finance Purchasing Assessment and Central Services and Water and Storage Department Budgets for Overtime.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-149, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-149.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Finance Department Budget for Supplemental payments to disabled firefighters.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-150, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-150. Second. This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Public Works Record Management and Parks Department Budgets for Soft Sand and Overtime.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-151, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-151. This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Refuge Budget for Overtime, Bag Distribution, Tipping Feed, Tires, and General Operating Supplies.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-152, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-152.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Storage Department Budget for Overtime, Gas, Diesel.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrath?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mato?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six eyes, one ass, and a square.
If your ordinance 19-153, consider it, finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-153.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 General Fund Budget to use funds from unused bond principal and interest and van interest to pay additional van principal.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.